Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum for 2024 Candidates in the Arlington City Council Race. We are very excited you're here to join us this morning. First and foremost, we are going to get, we're going to get started by bringing in the President and CEO of the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Michael Jacobson. So we are going to promote Michael up and bring him into the conversation.
All right. Hey, Britton. Y'all can hear me? All right. Aren't we glad that we're not on Zoom as much as we used to be? But the good news about it is it does give us an opportunity to record this candidate forum. So if you're watching this candidate forum live, if you're watching it recorded, thank you very much for caring about our race for city council, our races for city council, and wanting to get informed. Thank you very much to our candidates who are running. We appreciate you. We recognize the sacrifice it is to not only run for city council, but also to be a councilperson and all of the challenges that that creates. It's a lot of hard work, and we appreciate all of our elected officials for what they do. So thank y'all for being here this morning, whether you're a candidate or whether you're somebody who's choosing to be informed. Britton, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Michael. We really appreciate it. And I'm gonna send you back down into the attendee pool so you can enjoy this with everyone else. Hypothetically, I am anyway. Bye, Michael. So thank you again, as Michael said, for joining us today. I'm going to review some of the rules for the forum before we get started. We are going to do this in order of districts. So we're going to start with District One, go to Two, Sixth, and then Seven for our four races happening in this election, which is on May 4th, everybody. So the rules for this is that it is a showcase and not a debate. We are talking with our audience. This is about connecting with the attendees live as well as online watching on YouTube later. And we do not address comments of other candidates. Candidates will have nine minutes to answer eight questions. So we have changed the format from the past. It used to be a two-minute opening statement with some questions in a random order. Now it is just nine minutes for questions in a sequential order. Everyone gets the same. Then if you do go over your time, you are subject to being muted. So please respect the timer when it does go off. And then, of course, this will be posted on YouTube afterwards. We will send that link once it is up to all of our attendees today. And then you can share that with whomever you choose. It will be publicly posted on the Chamber YouTube channel. So with that said, we are going to get started. Our first candidate for District One, I am not seeing, Jacob Franklin. So I am going to go ahead and move us to our second candidate, which is going to be Tim Goss. So Tim, I do see you. I'm gonna bring you up. He is one of the three candidates for District One here in Arlington. So while Tim is getting situated. Maybe. Tim, you have declined to be promoted, which means you cannot speak in the order of the ballot. I'm going to try and promote you one more time. If not, I will move to Mauricio. Tim, you are coming up perfect, everyone. Sorry. Thank you for your patience. We know, again, Zoom isn't as prevalent in use as it has been in the past. So we are all getting back in our groove for doing it for something like this. But it enables, as Michael said, for everyone to watch it afterwards and see everyone on a, on a level playing field as well. Hello. Good morning, Tim. Let's make sure your microphone is working.
Test one, two. Can you hear me?
We have you. So, Tim, I am going to get my timer set up so that you have nine minutes.
Okay. Will I be able to see that as I'm kind of going through or no?
I will show it to you, but not everyone will be able to see it.
Okay, but as long as I know. I know if I'm running out of time. It's always fun to go first.
We have got you on this end here at the chamber. So with that said, I am going to ask you your first question, and then we will get started. So our timer is going. Our first question, you are running to serve on city council. What is your why as a potential elected official?
Thank you. And first, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak to you at the chamber. I'm looking forward to this. So as a dedicated public servant, small business owner, and retired disabled veteran, I have devoted my adult life to various forms of community service. From supporting church programs and local charities to coaching Pee-wee soccer and participating in government commissions and focus groups, I find immense fulfillment in serving others in my community. My commitment extends to guiding Arlington towards safer neighborhoods, fostering job and small business growth, and ensuring what little buildable land we have left in North Arlington will benefit all residents. With both the local and federal levels of government, coupled with a strong educational background, I believe my passion for Arlington, experience in government, education, and military background can contribute to making our city the best place to live, work, play, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you for that lovely answer, Tim. We are going to move to question two. What prior civic or community service activities prepare you to serve on city council?
Thank you. So I've had the privilege of serving as District One's representative on the Arlington City Bond Committee. Through this role, I gained valuable insight into the city's infrastructure needs and collaborated with fellow committee members to prioritize funding. Like many government entities, we consistently face challenges with balancing needs with resources. I mean, you know the old saying, do more with less. Additionally, I participated as a veteran advocate for the National Medal of Honor Museum and Veteran Focus Group. This experience was focused on ensuring the museum received the appropriate reverence and respect it deserves. Furthermore, I'm actively involved in supporting local charities, foundations, and various initiatives within my church community. These engagements have been my understanding of the needs of our community and strengthened our commitment to serving others. My background includes extensive experience, both the U Department of Defense, federal executive branch, providing me with valuable leadership, diplomacy, consensus building, collaboration skills. And finally, I have successfully managed multimillion-dollar government budgets in the past, further preparing me for the responsibilities of serving on this council. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are now going to move to question three. From your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
Thank you. So after extensive discussions in District One spanned several months, it's become apparent that North Arlington has reached its limit for multifamily housing. Residents overwhelmingly oppose any further urban development at this juncture. Doesn't mean they want it in the future, but right now they've kind of, they're wanting a different focus. In recent years, district has a significant surge in multifamily projects, including various new complexes and townhome options. Now, now residents are keen to shift focus towards economic development, bringing in complementary elements such as enhancing professional job opportunities, supporting the growth of small business, and fostering the development of retail and restaurant establishments and establishments in North Arlington. Within this focus shift, locally-owned small businesses play a huge role in fostering vibrant communities and catalyzing economic growth and prosperity. Not only do they create job opportunities, but they also generate substantial revenue for the cities. These enterprises often serve as the lifeblood of our neighborhoods, contributing to unique character and charm that attracts residents and visitors alike. Additionally, they promote a sense of community, pride, and engagement, fostering strong social connections and networks. Through their innovation, adaptability, and commitment to local values, these businesses contribute to overall well-being and resilience of our economies. Finally, there persists a notable absence of larger businesses capable of offering competitive salaries for professional career positions. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer to question three. You touched on this a little bit, but we're going to go into question four. So question four is, as a council member, you'll work on behalf of both residents and our business owners and developers. From your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital to our community.
Time there. Sorry. Can you hold the time up? Sorry. Economic development is merely about numbers and a balance sheet or graphs on the economic chart. It's about improving the lives of our individuals, families, and communities. It's about creating opportunity, lifting people out of poverty, and building a better future for generations to come. At least to higher income levels, better opportunities, and improved access to essential goods and services. The results are an overall enhancement in the living standards and individuals of individuals and communities. They aim to reduce poverty and create jobs, increase wages, and provide access to education, healthcare, and provide economic growth. Economic development can also contribute to social stability, reducing income inequality, and providing opportunities for upward mobility. It stimulates overall economic growth by increasing productivity, fostering entrepreneurship, and attracting investment. This growth creates a cycle of prosperity that benefits the entire city. And overall economic development plays a pivotal role in improving quality of life, reducing poverty, promoting stability, fostering innovation, and driving sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. We're going to move to question five, and you have about three minutes. Small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family, and support our community. How do you feel the city could better support our local small business owners?
Some small businesses are the backbone of our economy, fostering job creation, and enriching a unique character of our neighborhoods. Recognizing their significance, it's imperative that cities implement proactive measures to support local business owners. One effective strategy is for cities to establish preference for locally-owned businesses and their procurement processes. To achieve this, cities start by clearly defining what constitutes a locally-owned business, setting goals for increasing participation in city contracts. Transparent reporting mechanisms be put in place as well to track progress and ensure accountability. By prioritizing local businesses and procurement, cities can not only stimulate economic development within their own community, but foster a sense of belonging and pride with their residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move to question six with about two minutes. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all citizens here in Arlington?
Council must uphold and guarantee equal opportunity for all members of the community by creating an environment where every individual has a fair and unobstructed path to success. The Unity Council established by the City of Arlington serves as a platform to gather community input, conduct comprehensive research on best practices, and host tangible strategies to promote greater equity and unity in the community. I wholeheartedly support the effort of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are going to move to question seven. As a council member, you'll be a community leader of more than 400,000 residents. Please describe your leadership style and how you will collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Thank you. As a leader, I value the input and ideas of my team members. I believe that collaboration, open communications lead to better decisions and build stronger team cohesion. By listening to my employees and involving them in the decision-making process, I create a culture of honor and ownership. I will embrace participatory approach. I understand that at times decisive actions are necessary. In those situations, I'm willing to step up and decide. I'm going to cut that one short so I can do the last one. All right. Thank you.
Okay, the last one is a great short question. Now, number eight with 42 seconds left. With your remaining time, do you have any final thoughts you'd like to share with our attendees today?
Yes. In conclusion, I'm deeply honored by the chance to serve the Arlington community throughout my journey as a dedicated public servant, small business owner, and retired disabled veteran. My commitment to serving others has remained unwavering. Whether supporting local charities or advocating for veteran causes, I have experienced firsthand the profound impact of community service. As a council rep, my dedication will extend to guiding Arlington towards a brighter future. My experience with both local and federal governments, coupled with strong educational background, equips me with skills and knowledge necessary to address challenges facing our city. And I'm committed to working on behalf of both of our residents and business owners to ensure that Arlington remains a vibrant, thriving community. Together, we can overcome challenges and build a bright future together. Thank you for your support and vote Goss starting April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Tim. Again, Tim is a candidate for the City Council District One spot. We appreciate you being here with the Greater Arlington Chamber this morning. I'm going to send you back down to an attendee to enjoy the rest of the showcase.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone. Thank you again for joining us. If you're tuning in a little bit later in your morning, we are about to move to our city council candidate, an additional candidate for District One. So next, we are going to have Mauricio Gallente. Mauricio, I know you were on here, so I'm going to find you and get you promoted up. Mauricio, you have two logins, so I'm not sure which one's going to be correct. We're gonna, we're gonna go for the 50/50 shot and see if I get you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience while we get our panelist moved up and down within the system. Mauricio is also saying you have declined to be promoted. Perfect. As Mauricio joins us again, as a reminder, we are on city council District One. So thank you for joining us. And Jacob, I do see you, so we will go to you after Mauricio. Mauricio, will you turn your volume on for us?
Volume on. Testing.
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much for joining us today, Mauricio. And as a reminder, you will have nine minutes, and we are going to go ahead and get started with your question. So I am hitting start. Okay. You are running to serve on city council. What is your why as a potential elected official?
Well, I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. We've been a member of the Chamber for several years, seven years now counting, for the opportunity of coming here and explaining why we're running and showing showcase our platform. I believe in giving back to my community and leveraging my experience as a local business owner. And I want to cause a positive impact in Arlington growth. I bring practical experience in problem-solving, budget management, and fostering community relations. So we have several thousand members here in our Goff Center of Arlington, and we want to leverage this and serve the community.
Thank you so much for that lovely answer. We are going to move to number two. What prior civic or community service activities have prepared you to serve on city council?
Well, we are members of several organizations. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, of course. We are allied on the Veterans Business Alliance in Dental Health Arlington. My wife sits on the board. We've been supporting through our business, the Special Olympics golf program, La Mar in Arlington High School programs, Texas Turtles, the River Legacy Foundation, Arlington Charities, Arlington Shelter, Rest Hope, Field of Honor. So my wife and I, we are avid donors, and we volunteer hours, as many hours as we can to support in any way we can the community. So we are active part of the community, the neighborhood, and we are very proud to give the, to have that opportunity to serve them in a different capacity as a city council member.
Thank you so much. We are going to move to question three. From your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
Well, the city is growing fast, everybody knows. And being a part of the business community here, so we see that the, for me, my first priority is to keep crime low. Crime is low in Arlington, but we need to make sure as we grow, we keep it low. Deliver a more effective police presence. So I've been endorsed by the Arlington Police Association for a reason. They know I'm a man of action and can get it done. We want to invest in crime prevention initiatives through technology. So we want to, first priority here in North Arlington is to deliver the North Substation, Police Substation, that is currently under construction and 10 years in the planning. And we want to fully fund the flock cameras, to have cameras everywhere so we can have a better look of what's going on, and the police can take action faster and the community better.
Thank you so much, Mauricio. You have about just under six minutes left. We are going to move to question four. As a council member, you'll work on behalf of residents, owned business owners, and developers. From your, from your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital.
Well, economic development, Rebecca, is, it plays a crucial role in the overall well-being, prosperity, and sustainability of the community. So six things are important for economic development to point it out here. It increases tax revenues for social services. Every time you have a booming economic environment in the city, you have more tax revenues. That way, you can do, you can provide more social services. It creates jobs and reduces unemployment. It provides life amenities, parks, roads, everything being taken care of because you have revenue. Bring entrepreneurs and all the business owners from other parts in the region to invest and open their businesses and serve the community like one of the businesses we have. And attract investment. So investors, investors, and developers, and high-skill workers, they want to come to the city, leave the city, and open the business here. And also, also enhance the social stability. And you see the communities that the economy goes down, you see crime goes high, and the social stability is at risk.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move into question five with about four minutes left. Small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family, and support our community. How do you feel the city could better support our local small business owners?
Yes, local businesses provide 80% of all the jobs in any community. That's not only in Arlington, in the entire country. So simplifying regulatory processes and permits. We need permitting clear and expedite. So when somebody's opening a business or investing in the city, they need to know how long it takes and how long he expects for his price and have ROI, return on investment. So we can do, we can provide financial incentives and grants so the EDC, economic development company, can do programs and can invest in small business local from people that live and work in Arlington. So several resources on business development and training promote. Chamber of Arlington Chamber does a very good job on shop local. Shop local and stay local, and then it stays in the community, and it grows even more. And facilitate access to commercial spaces is another thing. And business operation, a business like mine, we do a lot of collaborations with local businesses, with pizza places, with restaurants, with other providers, the breweries. And everybody sells together, everybody promote each other. We call cross-promoting. It's so important to create that web of cross-promoting, and it's just everybody business in the city.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move into question six with about two minutes and 40 seconds left. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Oh, ensuring equitable access to city services. This is being done already by the city. Invest in education, drop job training for everybody. So you see pockets of lower employment or underemployment. We need to invest in job training and education for them. We can foster partnerships with community stations. So that's very important, very important. And regularly, we need to assess the disparities and through data, and see if we can do a better job.
Thank you so much. With about two minutes left, we are going to move into question seven. As a city council member, you'll be a community member. Of more than 400,000 residents, please describe your leadership style and how you collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Well, in my business here, I tell everybody, nobody was for me, everybody works with me. So I really value collaboration. So I roll up the sleeve and I work with my team. I value communication. I want to listen to what people have to say and give me their best opinion. I like adapting. So every time we have a contrib situation, we'll go ahead and, and change the strategies and to better serve. And I take responsibility for all my actions. That's the kind of leader I am.
I'm not trying to stress you out. I was just showing you the timer. So with one minute left, which is how much you have, what is your, what, what final thoughts would you like to share with our viewers today?
Well, everybody is watching here, so I am committed and engaged to serve you full-time. So I've been serving the community here. We have 14,000 members in our Goff community here, Goff Center of Arlington. Now I want to serve in a different capacity. You've been helping us and providing so much joy in our business enterprise here in Arlington. Now is my time to serve you, and I appreciate the opportunity. I am reachable. So on my website, on my folders, you can see my cellphone. Call me, text me anytime you want. You're going to find me here, my business, or you're going to find me on city council. You can always find me. I'll be available anytime. I'll keep you informed. I, I, every month, you can come out to a small business place and talk to me what's going on in the city. What is going to happen? I'm going to keep you in the loop in everything we do here in the City of Arlington. Is Mauricio, number four Arlington. I'm going to spell it Mauricio, M-A-U-R-I-C-I-O, number four Arlington.com. And the fourth, David Mauricio.
Thank you so much, Mauricio. We are over time, but we are so thankful that you joined us today. And we appreciate you being here. So again, everyone, Mauricio is running for city council District One. So I'm sending him back into the attendee pool. Thank you for being here. And we are going to bring up our last, our last candidate for District One. Then we'll move into another district. So Jacob, I'm going to promote you up to being a panelist. We have Jacob Franklin joining us. He is the third candidate for District One. As I'm sure you've noticed, based on our, our candidates so far this morning, we have District One in the north side of Arlington, just for some clarity. So as Jacob gets settled, turns on his camera and his microphone, we will go ahead and get started, but we'll let him get settled in first. Good morning, Jacob. Can you test your audio for us?
Hey, morning. How's it going?
We are fantastic here at the chamber. We hope you're having a great day. I'm going to go ahead and set my timer for nine minutes. So when you hear that in the background, like you heard on Tim, and for Mauricio, that means your time is up. So thank you for joining us. We are going straight into your questions. Number one, you are running to serve on city council. What is your why as a potential elected official?
I want to advocate for the needs of every citizen in Arlington. And, you know, gather input, listen to the experts, and do everything in my power to build this environment. You know, as, as the individuals in the city want to see it built with all of their interests in mind.
Well, thank you for that answer. We're going to move to number two, which is what prior civic and/or community service activities have prepared you to serve on city council?
Um, I don't, I haven't had any direct experience as a member, but I'm actively involved in homeless outreach in Arlington because that's a high priority for me.
Well, thank you so much. We are going to move to question three. From your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
The, the most important issue is probably the worsening poverty for a significant portion of the population. And this kind of has manifested itself in like a worsening homeless crisis. And it's also worsened by, you know, lack of access to affordable public transit and increasing, you know, prices of basic goods. So I want to address this by investing in infrastructure for public transit as well as affordable housing and zone for affordable housing to keep Arlington a livable city for, for everyone in it.
Thank you for that answer. We are going to move to question four, which is as a member of city council, you'll work on behalf of both residents and our business owners and developers. From your experience or from your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital to our community.
Economic development plays an important role in offering employment. in um offering uh employment to, you know, people in our community. Um a lot of people have their, you know, benefits um and other stuff uh you know, riding on on their employment. So it's important to um to provide um adequate employment opportunities for everyone uh in the city um. Yeah.
Okay, so moving to question five. Small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family and support our community. How do you feel the city could better support our small business owners?
Um I think that we can uh encourage a lot of um uh extra commerce for our businesses by uh making an effort to, you know, keep the city uh walkable and provide a public transit. Um so people can get around and to all the businesses and spend their money. Um we can also um make sure that since uh basic needs are met, um so they can uh focus, so they can have the the extra funds to go out and uh and spend on businesses. And uh you know, keep our our community growing.
Thank you for that answer. We're gonna move to question six. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Um well, it's important to uh to get the input of every um every money group um and uh you know, hear hear what needs they're experiencing directly from um the unity council is um done a great job uh, you know, making good uh steps in that in that direction, meeting, addressing some of those needs. Um I'd like to see uh more of their recommendations adopted and um uh you know, um the inequality in uh employment and housing and other areas to uh to be addressed um more fully.
Thank you for that answer. We are gonna move to question seven. As a member of city council, you'll be a community leader of more than four hundred thousand residents here in Arlington. Please describe your leadership style and how you collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Um my uh collaboration style is uh to just be very flexible to um talk things out, have discussions, uh get everyone's input uh and come to an agreement, uh come to compromise that will be in the best interest of uh everyone involved and at the same time, you know, making making sure that it's uh, you know, uh whatever agreement we reach is going to make concrete progress for, you know, for all the parties uh coming to the
Thank you for that. With your last question, you have about two minutes. With your remaining time, do you have any final thoughts you'd like to share?
Um I would just like to say um uh it's it's good to be here and it's good to be given an opportunity to um you know, meet more people in Arlington and it's to advocate for uh better conditions for everyone here. I hope y'all uh just have a good one.
Well, thank you so much for joining us today, Jacob. We appreciate it and we hope you have an awesome day. Again, Jacob is running for city council district one, and we have just finished all of our candidates for city council district one. Thank you so much, Jacob. Have a great day.
Thanks.
So we have heard from all of our candidates in district one, including Tim Goss, Mauricio Gallente and Jacob Franklin. We are gonna move into district two. Raul Gonzalez is currently serving on city council and he is running unopposed. However, we did want to give him the opportunity to talk with all of you today. So Raul, I am going to find you on this list and bring you up as a panelist. So Raul is getting in and uh Long Fam is in the same situation in district six. Uh he will also be here today as well, though. So while Raul is getting settled in, we're thankful for his current service on city council. And and we are, you know, again, he is running unopposed, but we are thankful he still chose to join us today here at the chamber. Good morning, Raul. Let's test your audio. We good?
Can you hear me?
We have you. Thank you.
Good morning, Bryn.
Good, good morning, Raul. So we are so thankful that even though you're running unopposed, you took some time to join us here uh with the chamber this morning. So I am gonna start your timer with nine minutes and we're just gonna go straight into questions. You are running to serve another term on city council. What is your why as an elected official?
Uh first of all, the chamber for allowing us to uh speak to the the community. It's important that we engage with everyone and uh this is a great opportunity to speak to everyone. Uh you know, I'm not, I'm not a business owner. I'm not a developer. I'm just a regular old taxpayer like everybody else. Um it's important to give back. I was a private cancer at a young age. And before serving on city council, I was on the Mansfield School Board. So I was taught at a very young age. You have to give back. I'm very blessed to have the opportunities that I've had through my life, being a second generation American. My family came over for a better life and I just wanna, you know, encourage and be the the voice for those who feel they don't have a voice and just working together for the better community. Moved here in nineteen eighty, uh past, uh past Arlington has embraced me. And I just want to make the city a better city for, not only for the citizens now, but future citizens like my children and everybody else's.
Well, Raul, we are so thankful that you're here with us today. So moving to question two. What prior civic or community activities have prepared you to serve on city council?
Well, I've I've been real involved for a long time. Um I I mentioned, I was on the school board for ten years in M I S D, forty percent of the kids in Mansfield I S D live in Arlington. People don't realize that there's two high schools uh that are in M I S D that are in the city of Arlington. Uh I served as president in two thousand ten. Uh was I've been a member of the Optimist Club since two thousand one. Uh I coached baseball from nineteen ninety seven to two thousand and nine. So I know I I I'm old because you hear all these long dates, probably before you were in Britain. Um member of the Salvation Army since two thousand eleven. Um Hope Tutoring, I I I'm just involved a lot and and probably the biggest thing I'm really involved is my university, uh U T A. Everything I have is because, everything that I have is because the university gave me the chances to to succeed and I get back. I'm at all the basketball games. I'm at any alumni event. I love speaking to kids and um students at college and as to schools through most school districts, so.
Well, thank you for all your service. We are gonna move into question three. From your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a matter, member of city council, how would you address it?
Well, obviously, it's important to have, you know, strong neighborhoods and 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 safe neighborhoods. So making sure that we have plenty of police on patrol. Uh we're adding more police to be on patrol. Uh you know, our our crime rates are down. They can always get better. Um you know, people have to feel safe to be heard. Uh keep your communities uh vibrant, um making sure that code uh is enforces, that you know, neighborhoods look great, the fences stay up, that the roads are all uh drivable and everything else. So it's a combination of a lot. Actually, it comes down to save neighborhoods and and crime.
Well, thank you for that answer. Moving into question four. As a city council member, you work on behalf of both our residents and our business owners. From your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital to our community.
Thank you, Bryn. Um it's critical. It brings in jobs, creates higher skilled jobs with higher pay. Uh the workforce that we have here at the U T A, uh after they graduate from college and and even the uh those are there's so much opportunity to to keep our uh our young people here, to live here. Uh so bringing in economic development, it's important for jobs, but it also brings in the tax base that allows us to provide more services for citizens. Um it also makes our, you know, allows our city to grow. Um allows for some of our buildings that need to be demolished to be redeveloped with some of the new economic development that comes in. Uh but most importantly is bringing new jobs and higher skilled jobs with higher pay, uh which just help all across the board.
Well, thank you for that answer, Raul. We are going to move into question five. Okay, small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family and support our community. How do you feel the city could better support our local small business owners?
Well, I really believe that the small businesses are the backbone of any city, growing up in El Paso. That's all you had back seventies and eighties when I grew up. Uh things have changed, but here in Arlington, it's the same. We have a lot of small businesses. They need the full support from the city, uh you know, to have the the tools that they need to succeed. Uh you know, the chamber offers a lot of great training tools for these small companies. It's not just for big companies, but um small companies. And first of all, we we need to um you know, go to these places, eat at those restaurants, um you know, give businesses small restaurant, uh small business owner, that that that's the key. They're the ones that hired local people, have jobs and everything else. Um so you know, they hire locally people, so they they keep people uh employed and um it's important to give back to the community.
Thank you so much, Raul. Okay, we are gonna move into question six. You have about three and a half minutes left, just for context. And what should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all citizens in Arlington?
Well, obviously, the unity council was put in place before I got on city councils has been a tool. We're able to hear from the community, uh the mayor's advisory council from all the different groups that he has has been very critical, listening to the needs and wants of the community. And most important, you gotta listen to the community. You gotta listen to them, uh be available. Uh one thing that I do is I answer every email I've ever gotten while on school board and city council and and you've got to be there and listen to them. The the citizens are the ones that live in the city. They know uh what's going on, what needs to be done. So um you you've got to go into these neighborhoods and and reach out to people and hear what they have to say.
Thank you so much, Raul. Moving into question seven. As a city council member, you'll continue to be a leader of our community with more than four hundred thousand residents. Please describe your leadership style and tell us how you collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Well, I really believe leaders lead by example and working hard is one of the things that I I really bring to the table. Uh I mean, i- it's important to be here. Uh I come to city hall every day to to make sure that I know what's going on. Um um I work well with others, you know, I don't, I do not make a decision until I hear all the facts. I like to get input from everyone. Uh it's a team effort, even here at city hall with all our coordinators. I tell them we're a team. It's not, I I don't run the city. Uh it's it our coordinators have to deal with our um citizens every single day by getting the calls. So uh working together with my city council, talking, uh collaborating, making sure we're all on the same page. And if a vote goes, it's not my way, I let it go. I don't talk about, oh, I voted this way and I was against it. No, once the vote's done, move on and you take it and you go forward for the betterment of the city.
Well, thank you so much for that, Raul. With about a minute and a half left, um do you have any final thoughts you'd like to share with the people watching today?
No, I I just, you know, I I think my uh you see me around town. I really, you know, I really love the city. Uh I I used to make my money in West County. I spent it in Tarrant County. I love being at the Levitt. I love being at all the events. I mean, uh you'll see me in parades. You'll see me everywhere. I've been around for a long, long time. Uh you just did see me when I decided to run for office. Uh this city is my uh city. I love it. My in-laws are all uh from the eighteen hundreds in Arlington, so I really feel uh an important niche of providing uh the best opportunity for all the citizens in Arlington. So um you know, like I said, I'm always those who feel they don't have a voice and that's what I got to offer.
Well, we appreciate it, Raul, and thank you so much for joining us today. Again, everyone, as a reminder, Raul is running unopposed for his seat in district two. However, we are so thankful for him graciously uh coming and speaking with us today. So thank you, Raul, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of your Wednesday.
You too.
Okay, everybody, we are going to move to our next district, which is district six. Long Fam is also running unopposed. However, he has graciously graciously decided to join us as well. So um even though there is not someone running against him on the ballot, he is still here to talk with you and let you know his views on these seven questions. So we are thankful he is joining us today. So let's let him get settled in.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Long, but we cannot see you. Will you turn your camera on for us?
Uh let me see where. Okay, okay, I I got it now, so.
Good morning, Long. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Good morning and thank you for Arlington Chamber of Commerce invited to this uh important forum. So uh we can uh talk uh with all of my constituents here in Arlington, Texas.
Well, we are so thankful you're here. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna set my nine minute timer and we are gonna move into question one. So question one, you're running to continue to serve on city council. What is your why? What motivates you to be an elected official?
Well, uh as an immigrant, I am here forty nine years ago uh from South Vietnam. Uh and I have the honor uh to serve our nation over thirty one years in the Army Reserve and Army National Guard and twenty five years in the um customer service business. And uh since I have to, I have helped to serve our nation. So now my turn, my turn to to serve our community and that the making reason why I run.
Well, thank you for that answer. Question two is from your, what prior civic or community service activities have prepared you to serve on city council?
Well, uh I'm a blade bloomer, so uh when I got called off active duty, thirty eight months in active duty at Fort Bliss, uh Texas. Uh I do a lot of uh community uh service, basically help our soldier and their family on base or off base. And then um I lived here for nineteen years and the last seven years I've been involved with Mission Arlington, helped them during Thanksgiving, Christmas, delivered bicycle to kids. And um and I also volunteer when I live in Oklahoma with the the children's and handicap kids. So uh and so I do have some little bit experience, but most of my experience to help me with city council from my leadership experience, my customer service and my civilian job.
Well, thank you for that answer. We're gonna move into question three. From your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
Well, um right now, uh housing, the the price went up, okay? In uh nine uh two thousand two, I bought a house thirteen hundred fifty square foot for eighty thousand dollars. Now that's how I would about two hundred fifty and it's it's ridiculous. So uh affordable housing, that that kind of misnomer. Uh I think now you talk about attainable housing, can you do that? And the way to combat that is we have even city council, we have now U D C code, that unified development code. We might be able to live a smaller home, like tiny home, a cottage home, those probably more affordable. And we need to work with our developers and see that we can get some land somewhere or re-redevelop a certain area and uh and build no houses. So we can make it uh more attainable for young couples start out today for the family.
Well, thank you so much for that answer. Moving into question four. As a member of city council, you work with both residents of Arlington and business owners and developers. From your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital to our community.
Well, uh economic development is so critical for our city because the three letter words that the mayor always said, job, job and job. And you know, uh this thing called the P three, uh P three stand for uh public private partnership. And because of that, that's why we have the the cowboy stadium, the Globe Life Field, the low hotels and uh all this thing that uh we have the entertainment district. And uh it's important that uh we we need to come out and uh and I'll I'll we have two offices, Economic Development Corporation with uh approved by the the voter Arlington seven years ago and a quarter penny sale tax going there. And then we have the other office called Economic Development. And with those two uh groups that we work together, probably bring in uh businesses and uh and if they can settle here in Arlington, that that'd be great for our community, that bring job and the tax paid, uh that help our community.
Thank you so much for that, Long. Moving to your next question, number five. Small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family and support our entire community. How do you feel city council could better support our small business owners?
Well, um small business being important, like uh Councilman Gonzalez earlier, this country run by small business. And we wouldn't be where we have a small business. And right now, our office of uh diversity equity. And right now, our office of diversity equity managed, I think, right by Mr. Troy Williams. And we working on with the prosperity bank and cross bank. We got seminar to help the new business, nursing minority business to promote the small business and help them get prepare, how to start out a business. And and it it it's a, it's kind of like a pilot program and we continue doing that. And try to get more small business involved because that's so critical for Arlington economy, the small business.
Thank you so much for that answer. With, we have three and a half minutes left, just for context. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Well, like we, like Councilman Gonzalez said earlier, we have the 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 unity council that came out after the George Floyd incident and they've been a great help and promote unity in our in our city and all the advisory council that Mayor Ross have created. Then we work together and try to make city better. And because of that, the the unity council have been a great help to promote unity with our the minority and to help everyone understand because we we so diverse, we folk so many different cultures, religion. And if we united together, we're going to be a great city, which we are.
Thank you so much for that, Long. And our next question is, as a member of city council, you'll be a community leader. You'll continue to be a community leader of our four hundred thousand residents here in Arlington. Please describe your leadership style and how you collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Well, there's three things I live by, you know, always do the right thing. Always do the best you can and show the people you care and lead by example and believe in teamwork. Because I am not a boss. I tell people, I'm just like them and I got four hundred thousand bosses. And I do work for my remind our constituents every day and they, I make them call me by my first name, not my title. Because the title, it's not really that important to me. And and like I said, I believe in collaboration, work together. Because of my military leadership experience, I know how to reach consensus and get things done. It's not about me, it's about the total team effort.
Well, thank you so much for that, Long. With your minute and a half remaining, is there anything else you'd like to share with the attendees watching today?
Well, you know, I I I served for thirty-one years in the United States Army, Armed Forces Reserve Component. And one thing I learned is, because I'm in United States Army, there's seven army values. And I call that share value, it's loyalty, duty, respect, seller service, honor, integrity and personal courage. That's the share value. If we 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 share the value and we learn how to live together and apply that to our daily lives. That gonna make us a better nation, a better state and a great city. And that's what I want to share with everybody. So share value is very important. And that's what I I want to share with everyone today. So you can write it down. So you don't know that you've always Googled the seven army values, okay?
Well, thank you so much for joining us today, Long. Again, Long Fam is our current city council member for District Six and he is running unopposed, but he has graciously joined us today. So thank you again for being here, Long. We hope you have a fantastic day.
Well, thank you.
Okay, everybody, we are going to move into District Seven, which we have two candidates in District Seven. So Bowie Hogg is the current incumbent and he is running again for his seat in city council. And Chris Dobie Dobson is running against him. So we have both of them here with us today. So first on the ballot will be Bowie Hogg. So I am going to find Bowie on this list. There you are, and I'm going to promote you up to panelist, Bowie. So as Bowie gets settled, he'll turn on his video. There we go, and his audio. Good morning, Bowie. We good to go?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We have you loud and clear. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to set my timer for nine minutes and we are going to get started. So Bowie, you know the rules. Here we are. You are running to continue your service on the city council. What is your why as an elected official?
Yeah, thank you. And and as some others, thank you for providing this portal from the chamber to communicate with citizens and also for all the work the chamber does in a central part of our community, the business community. I I'm running to continue serving the city where I was born and raised. You know, I went to school here from K through twelve, went off to Texas A and M University. And then met my wife, who was raised here, went to schools here, then went to U T A. And now we've chosen to raise our our family here. We have a seven-year-old and nine-year-old daughter. And we want them to love this city as much as we love this city. And and make sure the city progresses. Make sure we move to where we're we're going forward in the future. But we also have to focus on the fundamentals. And so we want to look and and find the piece of how we grow as a city, how we move forward. And and governing is hard. Governing is hard work from why we're doing this. And so I'm proud to serve. I'm proud to serve the citizens of Arlington to move forward with this. And I feel like I have the experience to be able to do that for all the residents.
Well, thank you for that answer, and it leads right into question two, which is what prior civic and community service activities have prepared you to serve on city council?
Yeah, Bryn, thanks. And as someone who's been in the city forever, I have a long list. And I think of some of the most important, you know, currently, I serve on the North Central Texas Council, North Central Council of Governments Executive Board. I'm on the Mayor's Education Coalition. But then previously, I served fourteen years on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, serving in maybe one of the hardest roles in this city as a a school board official. And during that time, you know, we proved what we did. While I was board president, we won Board of the Year by the H E B Corporation. We were nominated and won outstanding board. We also were finalists for largest year. But then I've also served our community in the United Way of Tarrant County Board, the Theater Arlington Board. I've served a small time on the Arlington Chamber Board, the Downtown Arlington Management Corp., Leadership Arlington Board of Directors. And even back when I was in high school, I was in the Citizens Police Academy, I'm serving from those. So I've run the gamut, I think, in this city. I think it helps me give a balance of what goes on in the city.
Well, thank you so much for that answer, Bowie. We are going to move into question three, which is from your perspective, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
Yeah, the most important issue of Arlington is always going to be public safety. And public safety is always going to be on because if we don't have a safe city, nothing else we do matters. It is the number one factor. And right now, I feel like one of the most unsafe places to be in Arlington is driving through an intersection. We've really got to increase our patrol from our officers and we've really, you know, there is, you hear it from multiple residents. We see hotspots in the city. People are running lights. They're they're driving crazy and we do have to increase the patrol. But I think the second piece on the most important issue is, you know, we've got to look at redevelopment and job creation. What are we doing to help this city grow from those perspectives is what we've also got to look at from from the other most important issue besides public safety.
Thank you so much, Bowie. So redevelopment, speaking of, as a council member, you'll work on behalf of both residents and business owners and developers. From your perspective, please explain why economic development is so vital to our community.
Yeah, the the plain and simple answer is economic development helps fund our city. It pays for those basic services like police, fire, roads, all the different things that neighborhoods rely on and are critical. We're not a sleepy suburb anymore, you know. Old Mayor said a long time ago, we're nobody's suburb, right? And and the city needs our commercial base. And if you look at our commercial base, we're at a, you know, just over forty percent. And most cities our size and most economic planners our size say we need to flip that. And so as a council, we need to be at about sixty percent commercial base. And that helps fund our residential base, which is what happening. So we have to go in and start working and saying, how are we recruiting jobs? How are we bringing more businesses to this town and helping to increase that commercial base? Which helps fund fund what we're doing and everything we're doing within the city.
Thank you, Bowie. Moving next to question five, you have about four minutes left. Small businesses contribute to our economy, employ our friends and family and support our community. How do you, oh, how do you feel the city could better support local small business owners?
Yeah, small business is truly the heart of our country. They provide more jobs than anything else that's out there. Sometimes the big businesses, they get all the recognition and you see the publicity and yeah, it's nice to create a a thousand or five hundred jobs. But those small businesses are the heart. My wife owns a small business employing other individuals here in town. So I I see the heart of what goes in. I help her at night with her books. I help her with her marketing from those pieces. Our city has to have a focus on those. A- as we grow those, as we work on with some of the larger corporations, how do we bring in small businesses to bring those together? We also have to make sure we continue recognizing small businesses. How are we bringing these small businesses to the forefront? And then the last piece is helping them with efficiencies. If they have to bid on contracts, I know we're doing a ton to help small business understand how to bid on government contracts. But how to grow their business and train them and make sure policies are in place that help them be more efficient and don't don't require tons of outlay and cost to be able to get anything done within the city. The more business friendly we are, the better we help a small business.
Thank you so much for that, Bowie. Moving into question six with about two and a half minutes context. And what should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality and opportunity for all the citizens in our community?
Yeah, nine minutes goes fast, so I'll I'll be quick. But we have to solicit the opinion of a larger opinion in the community. We have to look at everyone from different socioeconomic classes, different business status, realtors, everyone within this community. And and we've got to make sure we don't let the small, very loud group that that maybe complains the most make the decision that's the good for the majority from where it is. You know, I think we have to look and say, are we taking a true cross section of what the city needs? And looking at that, as an at-large council member, I represent every single citizen in Arlington. Whether you agree with me or disagree with me on that, I represent every single one on there. And so we have to make sure we're taking that opinion and looking at the good for all, instead of the just good of maybe sometimes the people who are the loudest.
Thank you so much for that, Bowie. Moving into question seven. As a council member, you will continue to be a community leader of our more than four hundred thousand residents. Please describe your leadership style and how you collaborate with others to overcome obstacles and make measurable change.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I I think if you have to describe me, I'm I'm proven and balanced in my leadership. You you've seen me lead, you know, you're not taking a risk of what we have. You've seen how I've led other organizations, from nonprofit organizations to my business, to also the Arlington School Board. And now my last two years as council, I'm always going to try and find what's the decision that's the best for our community. It's not always going to make everyone happy always there, but how do we get that? But also, I think I prove, I'm going to find action. You know, we call it, I sometimes call it moving dirt. There's a lot of ways you can start dreaming, you can have an ideas. But how do you actually get city staff? How do you get the private business community, the residents to come together and actually move action? I think that's what I've proven. I can make things happen within the city.
Thank you so much, Bowie. With twenty whole seconds left, is there anything else you'd like to say to our attendees?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you so much. It's been an honor to serve the city. It is hard work. Governing is hard. It is not easy. Sometimes campaigns are difficult, but I always say the real work happens after you win. I've proven I know how to lead. I'm proven to continue dedicated to this city. And I just ask you to continue supporting. And when you go out, please vote hog this upcoming election.
Thank you so much, Bowie. Right in on time. So thank you so much for joining us today. Again, Bowie is running for reelection in District Seven here in Arlington, and we are so thankful you joined us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bowie. And now we are going to bring up the candidate, the second candidate for District Seven, which is Chris Dobie Dobson. If I see him, I'm currently not seeing him on the list. Chris, if you are here. Do do do. You guys get all my commentary. I am not seeing him on the attendee list, so we may be ending early, everyone. So he is not here. And unfortunately, if you are not here for your turn, the time is up here. So thank you so much to all of you for joining us today here for the Greater Arlington Chambers twenty twenty-four Arlington City Council Candidate Forum. We're incredibly grateful for your time. Again, we'll be emailing all of you a YouTube link to this in a few hours, once we get a cover photo added and it uploaded to YouTube. But we truly, truly appreciate your time. As always, have a wonderful rest of your day. Remember to keep it local and shop here in Arlington and together we succeed.